We're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Nice to see everybody face to face. We have everybody present from the school board. And any additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are any.
There are none.
So we need a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
Motion from Rick. Motion from Rick, second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? Carried. Okay. Anybody for public comment? Saying nobody. We now have the consent agenda. And you have the minutes on the 23rd meeting. Cheryl, do you have something for us on the treasures?
I was able to audit the bills and there was nothing of note. Everything was as normal.
Okay. And then we have the personnel items.
I have a question on there. Is Carrie going to be part time? Kari? Kari will be part time, so Cheryl will be also.
Yeah, so do you want me to run through these personnel items?
Go for it.
Okay. So Rachel, Anita are returning employees. They were in positions that were in a one-year contract last year. We're going to do another one-year contract this year. After that, then they'll be on the same cycle as all the other contracts. And so then they would go into two-year contracts. So Rachel's our school nurse. Anita is our innovation center facilitator. Then you have Katie's contract. Katie is going to be taking over Linda's position, starting August 1st. Andrea is in addition to our PAWS staff. The PAWS enrollment has increased dramatically since the beginning of summer. And so we need some more personnel to have PAWS function. Jonah Johnson, his IT contract is coming. It's going to be in-house. He will be a full-time Painesville employee. And so we will not be selling any of his time right now to neighboring districts. At this time, Jonah and I have talked about that. And he does know that that is something that if there's a need in the future, I would at least be willing to have that conversation. And he's fully aware of that as well. Kari, the plan with Kari is to have her serve as a point-two classroom music teacher at the elementary school. Ms. Holmberg will have her delivering a grade band of classroom music. Essentially, when we went and took and added the third section of second grade last year and then added a section of kindergarten this year, you combine those two things and all of a sudden, there's more sections of classroom music than one music teacher can handle at the elementary school. So that's where that point-two is coming from. The contract for Kari is it's a dependent upon receiving a Tier One license from Pelsby, which I'm assuming everything is in order. We just have some process to go through in order for that to be finalized. But it's pending that approval. And then the resignation from Theron Knowlton. He has taken a position in another school district as their instrumental instructor and band director.
Okay. Can I just say, since it's the summer, we won't probably see him, but I just want to say we're going to miss Theron. He's done a great job. And really disappointed to hear that, but I know he's good for him, and I'm sure. But big shoes to fill, and I am concerned about it.
Well, we have it posted. And we have just in the last couple of days, I've gotten three applicants so far. So some interest out there.
Okay. Do we have a?
No, that's just the summary of the consent agenda.
Do we have approval or a motion to approve the consent agenda?
What are your motions?
I have a motion from Thomas. I'll be a second. Second from myself. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? Carried. Then we're going to go right to communication items and then we'll go right to Matt.
Okay. And can I just also bring up one last thing that was kind of tied to the consent agenda? It's not a consent item, but I did share with board members a letter with my intent to want to negotiate another contract. If I could just acknowledge that the board received that. And Linda, if it could just be in the minutes that the board is in receipt of that and you guys can decide what you want to do with that letter. No action on it tonight. I just need the minutes to reflect it. Okay? All right. Communication items. So the first thing we're going to do is we're going to take probably 15, maybe 20 minutes. And we're going to walk down to the CTE space and get a look at the construction process and what's been happening with the facility project. After that, we'll come back here and we'll pick up with our communication items. All right? Oh, let me introduce these three gentlemen, too. So first, we have John Olson. John is with BCI Construction. And John is the site superintendent.
Yeah, of all the general trades.
Of all the general trades. We have Tom Zeromsky. Thank you, Tom. I butcher his last name every time I try to say it. So Tom is SiteLogic Site Superintendent. And then we have Josh Scobman, who's also with SiteLogic. And he's really kind of my first point of contact with SiteLogic. Whatever I need from them, he's the person I'm on. So Josh and Tom and John are kind enough to come tonight and kind of show you guys around as to what's happening. All right? Let's head out. Are we good?
We're good.
Good.
Okay. Then Matt will stay with you.
All right. So a few things on the communication items. First of all, I want to thank Linda. So this is Linda's last board meeting.
You can't come back. You can always visit.
Yeah, absolutely. Public comment?
Sure.
There you go. Slice things up a little.
But Linda, thank you. I mean, I'm one of the newer people around the table. And I can tell you that it has been greatly appreciated, the work that you've done here. And your attention to detail and your level of organization professionalism is bar none. So thank you very much. It has greatly appreciated. And I'm sure you will have plenty to do in retirement, though, too. So thank you very much. A couple of other things with communication items. Personnel, I just want to update the board. We're real close to being done with personnel. Obviously, we have the instrumental music position that is posted, as David mentioned. And we'll be working on that. We have one other position as well that we actually have a candidate who has interviewed and everything. And the committee has selected a candidate. They're licensed out of state. So I'm working with Pelsby on getting that license to Minnesota. And once that's done, that is a position that I know will be coming to the board in August. Outside of those two positions, I believe that is what is left for the personnel side of the house. So almost all personnel items are taken care of and ready to go. Summer seminar, the MSBA is doing things a little differently. It's over the course of two or three or four days. They're doing evening sessions. If you want to register for those, just email Linda, email myself. We will get you registered. I was looking a little bit at it this evening, but they did send an email out. And if you're looking for the email, I can certainly forward you the one that came to me. So let us know if you would like us to be registering you for that. And then the last item I have on here is Fall 2020. We're going to talk about it more as we get through the agenda and to the end of the agenda. But we are working diligently on a plan for Fall 2020. And we are waiting for the state's guidance, just like everybody else is. But I want everybody just to understand that our goal is to have students back as quickly as we can. I think one of the things personally that I took away from distance learning, a little interesting because West Central Tribune had emailed a group of superintendents once the MDE released the parent survey data about distance learning. And my comment to Linda from the West Central Tribune was that it was very clear to me that distance learning worked for some students and it didn't work for others. Likewise, we also know that traditional school works for some students and not for others. And so I think really what we need to do now is we need to take the opportunity as a system and take everything that worked from distance learning and combine it with everything that we know that works with traditional learning. And we need to create what we want learning to look like at Painesville. And that, to me, is absolutely at the core of what we need to do. So I know that we're charged right now with coming up with three scenarios. That's what the state has told us we need to do. In reality, we need to create a scenario. And it needs to be a scenario that works for all students. So that's really what we're going to talk about as we get down to that item in the agenda. But I do want all of our community to know. I want our parents to know, yes, we want students back. We need them back. I think students need to be back. We also need to do this as appropriately, as safely as possible, so that everybody's well-being is considered. So that's kind of where things are at for fall. I hope we get an announcement soon, but the 27th is kind of what I'm anticipating. Yeah?
The Minnesota survey.
Yep.
How do we compare, like, to some of our peers? Like, do you have access to that data? I didn't even look for it. Is that available? I'm just curious, like, because I felt like the point was we had really positive from what we heard. The survey read a little bit different. So I'm just curious, like.
Yep. So I think there's a couple of things. And MDE is the first one that's going to tell you this. That survey is 100% unscientific.
Yes.
It is not a random sampling of what is demographically represents our student bodies in the state of Minnesota or in Painesville. So that survey can't be taken as the sole data point to really make planning decisions. I think it's a snapshot. And the reality is, we had 65 respondents that declared that their district of residence was Painesville. Now, does that mean we had more or less? I don't know. I really don't. There was nothing in there. They had no way of verifying anything. But I don't think that's a real large sampling size for Painesville. And so our data came back that we had about 52, 53% of families were either happy or very happy with distance learning. And 48% were either unhappy or extremely unhappy with distance learning. So I think that is, that's the devil's in the detail there, is there are some good things we need to take from distance learning, but there are also things that obviously didn't go as planned.
Yeah, I was just curious. I mean, I'd be curious, like, would we ever consider doing, you know, like, the Minnesota student surveys every three years, like, doing one even just on our parents to see, you know, if we're doing some of these changes and implementing, like, how do we gauge both our sampling size? I mean, that was a 6%, right? 65 of 950 or something like that. But yeah, I'm just curious, like, how do we start to know, like, if this is just a snapshot, but to get a better pulse? Because we hear it's, you know, from a few people, but.
Yeah. And the other takeaway that I took from that survey, and this was the statewide data, I'm not talking about just Painesville. But the statewide data, the number-one reason that respondents to that survey gave for distance learning not going well is because their student wasn't empowered to learn. To me, that is a systemic problem. That is not something that is a brick-and-mortar issue. That is not a distance learning issue. That, ladies and gentlemen, that's a problem. That's, you're talking about the largest reason being kids aren't empowered to learn. Kids don't know what they're passionate about. They don't know what they're interested in. Or they don't find a connection to what they're passionate and interested in to what's happening at school. That's why you get that answer. And so to me, that's the one that's most alarming. That, the red light should be going off for everybody across the state if truly the reason kids weren't successful is because they didn't feel empowered to learn.
Right. But if they're, like you said, have that prescribed education, they have no choice. They don't know how to advocate for themselves. They don't know how to go through a day without telling me what to do. What are my scores? What's my checklist?
But isn't that a symptom of the system?
It is.
And so that's the thing. I mean, if anything, that just reinforces what we've been talking about, is how do we engage kids with their individual interests and passions? That survey, to me, really reinforced all of that conversation because that's an alarming number in my mind. But it's a systemic issue. That's not, I don't want this to come across as this is a Painesville issue. That one is a bigger issue. But it's interesting, very interesting.
With the caveat, too, just as you're saying it, I'm thinking there are some kids and adults that need structure from other, from outside sources. They do well in, like, military or in systems where there is just tell me what to do and I do best this way. So some kids, when you, when you give them empowerment, it just overwhelms them. And it's more like, you're empowered to go along with this system or this, you know, this schedule or this schedule would probably be better. Just some kids, just saying.
Yeah, true.
But I think you need to look at the distance learning thing. There are organizations that have had distance learning for a period of time. We need to step up to the plate and be able to compete with that to be successful there. And I think it's a new box, a new method for. Wait, wait, wait. I don't know that we had anybody involved in distance type learning until this comes up. So it's not going to work right away.
Right.
It's going to take some time to develop. But we have to be really good at it because anybody can find whatever they want in that marketplace. And we have to be really good at it.
And I was thinking, too, you're taking this survey thinking that this was kind of a novelty, a one-time thing. If you were to say, oh, this is how we're going to do it from now on, would you get the same? You know? Because now I've been home with my kids for four months straight. That's longer than most summer breaks. And it's like, I'm kind of done with the whole.
Right, truly.
It's not novel anymore. Now it's like, oh, another day.
Can't reiterate enough, it is an unscientific survey. And MDE is the first one to put that out there.
Right.
But, you know, I do think that there was some interesting data points, at least.
And I think that one of the points would be, are there kids out there in our district that found out that they were doing better with distance learning than they were in school? It'd be interesting to know.
Oh, definitely.
Who those kids were and then why it was, and would they want to continue with that?
Right. And I think that the trick now is, obviously, whenever the pendulum swings from one extreme to the next, I don't personally believe that's good for anyone.
Right.
But now the trick is, how do you engage those kids that maybe struggled in that traditional brick-and-mortar system but thrived in that distance learning? We need to capitalize on that. We need to take that momentum and we need to absolutely build that into the fabric of exactly what we do every single day. So yeah, it's interesting. Any other questions regarding my communication items? Paige could not make it tonight, so we do not have a student rep. Maggie, do you want to touch base just a little bit on West Central Ed? They had a board meeting last night.
Yes. So we had a board meeting last night, and they've been trying to highlight each of the programs. So we just have better visibility to what they do. And so yesterday was birth to three. And so a lot of the conversation was just their services in general. If we are not in school, like, how do you do those services? You can't do occupational therapy, physical therapy, vision therapy, all those things without being in homes. But they talked about their biggest reason why for the birth to three, it's referrals. But the number one, or the number of reasons, I think, was they want their child to walk and talk. But they said they're not capturing all, but they're capturing most students. So when they go into their district for preschool screening, you know, that's like the next checkpoint. And, but, you know, I asked, like, as member districts, what can we do? And again, just continuing to have referrals, making sure that our families are aware that these services exist because earlier we can have interventions with our students, not students yet, but those kids. The better it is for preschool, the better it is, you know, if we capture, you know, preschool screening and so on and so forth. So it was mostly just a highlight on that program, which was good to hear. I can probably, we can probably share that slide presentation with everyone. The rest was just, like, policies and kind of standard business operations. That was kind of the biggest thing, right?
And just to go a little bit further with what Maggie was talking about, one of the things that Matt Dickhausen is really focusing on is he really has a mission with preschool. How do we engage all of our four-year-olds? And so that's really been a push the last couple of years. We are working diligently to try to make sure we can engage four-year-olds prior to that kindergarten year with school programming, with preschool services. We just actually got our Achievement and Integration Grant approved. Part of that grant, there is some incentive money in there, and we are going to further incentivize preschool to try and make sure that as a district, I would love for us to be able to say, 100% of our four-year-olds are engaged in preschool prior to entering kindergarten. And that is really what Maggie's talking about. When you talk about those birth-to-three services, it's getting that early engagement with children and families in order to have the highest impact. Because those are the ages where you can see just exponential growth in student skills.
And they also said it's easier to get services, for whatever reason, just the red tape, like, if they need whatever type of therapy, it's easier for them to get those services. And then, you know, it's more difficult and takes more time once they're in school. So again, it's just better all around if we are referring that parents know, so it beats the whole process. But yeah, so I think that was, the rest was just kind of regular business, like I said.
Any other committee reports or anything? I think that was it.
Okay. Now we'll move to new business. So now we have some of the stuff that we have to do every year with the official newspaper and all that. And we have one through seven. Do you want to have a motion and a second and a vote on every single one? Or should we do them all together?
I think we can do them all together.
It's kind of the same thing. I mean, we're not changing the press.
If somebody wanted to remove one, they would.
So, anybody have any questions?
Do you want me to run through them real quick?
Yeah, why don't you?
Official newspaper has always been the Painesville Press. Recommendation is to continue with the Painesville Press as our official newspaper. So this is where we would publish our notices that were required by statute. Authorization for payments of bills. This is, there is a new piece in there, that last sentence, and authorize electronic fund transfers during the 2021 school year. That's the piece that the auditors wanted in, if you remember from the audit review. So it is in there this time around. We won't have to revisit that conversation. Census takers. We do identify census takers every year. Typically, we have always identified Matt as the community ed director. We've identified Linda, and we've identified Katie in her role as the elementary school admin assistant. So we will identify Matt and Katie right now. Just know, once we get a person in place in Katie's role, then we will add that person as a census taker as well. Hearing officers for hot lunch. This is required by statute. If somebody fills out a free reduced meal application and they are, disagree with the findings or the qualifications, they can file an appeal. My recommendation would be that the board chair and superintendent are the people that would be the hearing officers and would resolve that issue. The school bank, we would utilize Central Minnesota Credit Union for payroll, Bank of the West for our general accounts and activity accounts. And then we would continue to use PMA Financial for our investments, short and long-term. Commencement date, you've already approved a calendar. I've just simply taken that date off of the calendar that you approved and put it here because you do need to approve the commencement date as an individual item. June 6, 2021, 2:00 p.m. at the high school will be the commencement date for the class of 2021. And then if you look at the fee schedule, a couple of changes on the fee schedule. Meal prices, again, we're in this same conversation that we had last year. We need to continue to show that we are making progress towards equalizing what we get reimbursed for a free meal and what we are charging for a full pay meal. And so that's where these increases for breakfast and lunch are coming from. We are required to close that gap annually. And so there is a small increase that is being recommended for both lunch and breakfast. Mileage reimbursement, it was at 46 miles, or 46 cents per mile. I am recommending that we up it to 50. It's been many years since it has been changed. Right now, I believe the IRS amount is, I believe, 57 and a half cents per mile. So I'm recommending a slight increase for that. Substitute teachers, I am recommending a $5 increase on these amounts. They were at 115 and 120. I'm recommending they go to 120 and 125. And then the substitute employees, I would like to eventually get all of these employees subbing for us to a $13 an hour sub rate. The reason why we're doing this in different amounts and different classifications is because I don't want our subs making more than our regular employees. And so this is just keeping them in line with where our contract numbers are. Questions on any of those fees? We are not doing anything with our tech fees, our device insurance, our activity fees, ticket prices. All of those things are all staying the same. It is just those items that were highlighted in yellow.
So a question in regards to the athletic fees and activity pass. So there is a refund pro rated based off of injury. Do we want, well, would there be, let's say, there is a fall sports or they get a partial season? Is that something to consider or look at? And the same with family passes? If a family purchases a family pass and there's no sports, like, just something to do?
Correct. Yes. I can sit here today and tell you, if there are no sports, then those fees will be refunded. The spring fees that we collected last year were refunded in full. Even those activities that did practice for a couple of weeks, we simply refunded them. It gets a little trickier when you start talking about partial and how that looks. So at least at this point, what I would like to do is, let's leave these fees as they are. And then let's see how the fall plays out. And then we can make a determination with what we think is appropriate and reasonable. I did not hear any negative feedback with how things were handled with spring activities and stuff. So I think we can handle it in a reasonable manner and have people feel like it's fair.
Let's go into mileage. Why don't we have, use an IRS right here in the district? I mean, it is just curious.
I'm not sure.
I thought that was odd that, you know, most governmental agencies.
We brought it up a few years back, just exactly what you're talking about. And then you just don't deal with it anymore.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I've been in districts that it's just simply the IRS amount. And then I have been in districts where they just establish their own and that's what it is.
I was kind of curious.
Yeah. Any other questions with fees?
If we leave it where we're at right now, let's bring that topic up next year.
That's fine.
Because I think we need to be looking at, at that. And then it disappears off of here, in reality.
Yeah, if you set it to just be.
Seven cents a mile is going to be quite too nominal because we don't have that much of it in the first place.
Right.
But it eliminates just exactly what Jake is talking about.
Yep.
And Cheryl and Rick, I'm almost positive we were, do you recall that discussion? Was it before then?
The only problem I have with IRS is it changes sometimes. You don't even change it. You got to be aware always that it's.
You have to be checking.
Yeah.
This way, you know it's a set fee.
Yeah.
It's not that far off. It doesn't really matter either way to me.
So do I have a motion to approve one through seven in new business?
I'll make that a motion.
I have a motion from Rick.
I'll second it.
And I have a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion on those seven items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? Carried. Then we're going to go to the resolution calling the school district general election. Really not a whole lot that, change about that that's just.
Yeah, you have no choice in this matter. On November 3rd, there's going to be an election. And so we have three seats that are up in November of 2020. And so it is the district's responsibility to call for a general election on November 3rd. That's what this first resolution is doing. Big difference between the last time we had an election, the last thing we did was our facility project referendum. We absorbed the election costs associated with that because we were the only thing on the ballot. This, we will run on the statewide election date. And so there will not be those elections costs that were associated with the facility. costs that were associated with the facility.
So do we have a motion for the resolution calling the school district general election?
Let me go first.
A motion from Thomas, a second from Jake. Any further discussion? Okay, Linda?
All right. Ashley?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Carried. Okay. Then we now have another one right behind that, and that is the resolution establishing dates for filing affidés for some candidacy.
So the important thing with this is the people interested in filing for an open school board seat can do that on July 28th, and it runs through August 11th. So that is the window in which people can stop at the district office and get the appropriate paperwork that they would need to be able to file and see what the criteria is for them to run for school board. That's really the main point of this resolution. You're establishing those dates as the window in which they can file.
So do we have a motion to introduce the following resolution, resolution establishing dates for filing affidés, debits of candidacy? I'll make that motion.
Awesome.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Maggie? Any further discussion? Linda, we're back to you for a roll call.
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, carried. Now, Matt, we're going to go back to you, food service bids.
So we are going to do something slightly different with food service bids. In the past couple of years, these have been one-year bids. We did go out and we asked for two-year bids this year. So next year this time, you won't necessarily see a bread and milk bid. Districts have the statutory authority to go out for four-year bids if they want. So every four years, we have to go out and get bids. We don't need to make that jump, but I think doing two-year bids is reasonable. We have one bread bid, it's Panagold, and they have been receiving the bread bid here for what sounds like several years now. It's been a long time since somebody other than them has bid. And the recommendation for the milk bid is to stay with Kemp's. Again, that would be for the 2021 and 2122 school years for both of those. Questions regarding those bids?
I assume then their prices have to stay the same.
So they do have an escalator that they describe in the bids. The Kemp's is, let me look. You know what, I don't have the thing.
And I don't have that piece with me.
Kemp's was dependent upon market price, if I recall correctly, is how Kemp's was doing their bid, which is very similar to how we get invoiced right now for Kemp's. If milk prices go down a half a penny, then whatever they deliver at that new price, that's half a penny less, that's what our invoice reflects.
Typically, the milk bids always come in with an escalator plus...
Yeah.
With the lunches and stuff that we serve, this just goes on anyway.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a motion to award the bread bid to Panagold and the milk bid to Kemp's for the 2021 school year?
I make a motion.
Or in the 2122?
I make a motion.
I have a motion from Thomas. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A second from Cheryl? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? Carried. Now we're on the 22 long-term facilities maintenance.
Yep, this is a little, we're always working a year out, so what you're approving now is fiscal year '22, long-term facility maintenance. Nothing has changed from the preliminary 2021 budget folder that you guys worked with in March and April and May, and then approved in June. The projects that are on there are the exact same that were on there. The district receives roughly about $385,000 in revenue annually for long-term facility maintenance. This document and this budget that we will submit is a fluid budget. So just because we submit this today, that doesn't prevent us from, if something arises six months from now and we have to amend it or change it, we can do that. That is actually how the program is designed, and that's the intent of the program. So today, what I'm asking for you to do is approve the 10-year facility maintenance plan that we discussed while we did budgeting, and then also grant me the authority to submit the assurance of compliances on the district's behalf.
So do we have a motion for the resolution for the long-term facilities plan?
I'll move.
We have a motion from Rick. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Thomas, and then this one. Any further discussion? Okay, Linda, this was a roll call again, it looks like.
Ashley?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, carried. Okay, then we're on the return to plan fall 2020.
Okay, so I'm going to get Mrs. Homberg on the phone here so she can participate in this conversation. Do you want some?
Oh, good morning.
Hey, Mary, it's Matt.
Hi, Matt.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine. How about you? Can you hear me?
I can, and I'm going to turn the volume up so everyone else can hear you too. And then we'll go ahead and get started.
One, okay.
All right, so David, do you want to maybe start, and Mary can add to this as we kind of, this is informational, there's nothing that's being approved tonight. It's more just an update and to kind of give the board an idea of where things are at. So with that, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's important to know that we're in the preliminary stages and with things kind of up in the air. What we've tried to do, I think the return to learn document was shared with you with different bulleted points. And so Mary and I have been working on kind of expanding that and coming up with different ideas on what scenario number two, which is the hybrid, and what that could possibly look like. We haven't decided on what schedules would look like, or how many kids are in the building at once, things like that. But what we've done is we've spent some time kind of going through that document and filling in some of the areas with items that we know for sure that we need to do, and also with things that we need to discuss as we get more people involved, like our school nurse and teachers. So that is kind of where we're at with it. So what we've done is kind of broken it down between the two different buildings. We are, we've been looking at, and Mary, I'll talk about the secondary, and then do you want to jump in?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the first part of this document was looking at the capacity and what that would look like. The high school, we have about 43 classrooms, and the average square footage is about eight to nine hundred and sixty feet, 800 to 960 feet. Guidelines say that if, we should be able to get about 23 students in a 900-foot, 900 square foot room. So we've arranged some rooms in the building to kind of see what those things look like. We also have, looking at the cafeteria, the gymnasiums, the student center, auditorium, band room, innovation center, and the choir room as possible areas for instruction. And Mary, you want to talk about the elementary?
Yes, thank you. So at the elementary level, we have 32 total spaces that have that 900 square foot or so footage, and then we also have 14 other spaces that are typically smaller than a classroom that we can use to work with our kids in smaller groups.
Can we ask questions? Sure. So you're talking about the square footage and the number of students. Is that trying to do a certain distancing, and does that take into account countertops and some of that that are in those rooms?
So we...
It makes, basically, no difference.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Well, it makes it, basically, the square footage is usable square base in the classroom. It's CDC guidelines, given the example of a 900 square foot classroom, we could fit approximately 23 kiddos in there. So that is, that's with that six-foot distance that they're talking about. So if you put a three-foot ring, like picture a child with a three-foot pool around them, that would give that distance for them to be away from the next student in the next desk in that square footage of a classroom. Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah, so what is our class size generally, what's our average class size today?
At the high school, it really varies depending on what the class is.
So I just want to talk a little bit about occupancy, because I think that's the other piece that is an important factor that everybody needs to be aware of. The guidance talks about 50% of occupancy. Occupancy is different than population. So to give you an example, this building, when I arrived here and when I started talking about a facility project, I was reminded repeatedly that this building was designed for classes of 125 students in a grade, and we do not have that anymore. You have to have plenty of space. And so when you take that 125 and multiply that by sixth grade levels, or seventh grade levels, excuse me, that are over in this building, you're just shy of 900 students is what is the occupancy here. Well, let's make it 900 for easy math, and I know technically it's shy of that, but that brings us to 450. There's about 525 students that currently attend school here if we were in our traditional school mode. So that gives you kind of some ideas of what we're talking about when we talk about 50% occupancy. And we are in actually a pretty good spot here because we do have some space. So go ahead.
And when you, and when you look at it, 450, we have many students who are PSEO, who are doing online courses, who maybe are going to go to a different school or facility for classes, so we're never going to have a full load of students in this building. So we do have spaces. It'll, the logistical part that may be difficult is if there is a large class and we need to have that class in two different spaces at once and what that would look like. So those are, those are things that we haven't, that we haven't looked at real deep yet, and we're kind of, we want to make sure we get some input from other people. So then we started to talk about some of the safety measures that would be in place for our building as far as visitors, markings on the floors, hallways, cafeterias, bathrooms, things like that. And we're working with Anita Flanders on creating the signage that we need for this building. We're getting, we're getting emails and phone calls from many different salespeople wanting to do those signs, and we can, we can create those in-house, so that's an advantage that we have. So, and then looking at whether we can have one-way traffic in hallways. I think we're, it's a little easier to do that in this building and some of our hallways because of the way that the building is designed. Elementary is not as easy, but there are a few areas. And then we've talked about what the drop-off would look like in the morning, and a lot of that is, there's some gray area as to what we're going to be required to do. Are we going to be required to take, you know, temperatures of every student coming into the building and at every entrance, and how those things are going to look? And so we're, we're just kind of in the early stages of kind of deciphering what that's going to look like for our school district. And...
And fortunately...
Go ahead.
Unfortunately, with our summer pause program, we've been able to practice the social distance thing that relies on, you know, the example number one from MBE. So we've asked some parents to confirm that their kiddos don't have any symptoms, and that's been working for us. So that's one of our main thought processes right now, is to find a way to do this and do it efficiently and effectively without spilling on children or making them feel bad if they don't feel well.
Any questions so far?
Okay. And then the next area that we're looking at is what it looks like when students are brought to school and dropped off, and what it looks like at the end of the day. And so we've both, we've looked at the maps on both buildings. At the high school, we are looking at some fairly major changes with our busing, in that we will, the plan is to have the buses out front, and so the main exits will be doors four and five and six. And that would, that's at the end of the day in the morning. The drop-off would remain the same on the, on the middle school side. And so we're, we're talking about how to stagger student dismissal, whether we do it by grades or we do it, students who are walking, we have, would go out the community ed door or one of the side doors because most of the walkers are walking that direction. And then also what it looks like for students who either have an activity after school or drive to school and what door they would exit, so we would fine-tune all of that at the high school. Do you want to talk elementary?
Right, at the elementary level two, we'll be defining doors, it's called staggered entrances. So the kiddo will know, like kindergarten, first grade will come in door number four, that's over by the kindergarten lane. Grades two and three will come in door number five. Grade four will come in door number six, and then our fifth grader can come in door number seven, which is right in their lane. And then at the end of the day, it works really well because kiddo will know that they just walk out the same door that they came in. And then like David said, we've got some priorities, you know, like the walkers would go first, and then our paws, kids would follow them. Any activities and parents pick up, so that it's really clear, there's a clear picture for parents and kids of one minute to leave the building in a safe manner.
And also with...
Any questions on that?
And also with the drop-off in the morning, you know, we've always had some time for students to, you know, kind of hang out in the building, at both buildings, whether it's on the playground or inside the building here. So we need to come up with a plan for, so that students aren't just kind of all over the building, so that we can check them when they come in and whether that's altering the, you know, the time that the bus arrives, or the start time, or however that would work. And if there is some type of a check that has to go on, then we understand that that would, that would eat into our day a little bit too, because that is going to take some time and some staff. So we're in the process of looking at what that supervision would be. And then Donnie Mayer is taking care of the hand washing station, the sanitation, sanitizing stations, and so those would be at every entrance and inside all of the classrooms.
I have a question about buses. How is that going? Like, are we, I don't even know the question to ask. Part of it's like, I'm hearing like from other districts, like they're having a mass exodus of drivers, and there's just a lot of concern. I'm just, like, what are some of those conversations? Like, how is that?
Well, I think the reality is, you know, our, our bus drivers are a lot of times, you know, retired people. So I think there is some concern. I couldn't speak to where they are on, with their employees and things, but transportation, I think through this whole process, transportation is the muddiest because we don't know what, you know, 50% looks like. We don't know how many, it could be, you know, one route might have a family of five on there, which would make the numbers on that bus different than maybe a different route. And so that is really up in the air, and that's one of the reasons that we want to get a pretty good of an idea on how many families are interested in bringing their, dropping their kids off and picking them up, and that will help clear some of those things up.
And I'm having continuing conversations with Painesville Motor and Transfer. I'm going to talk with Michael again tomorrow. The one thing that I can say throughout all of this, I'm really proud of the fact that we have a very good working relationship with our bus company. That is a doubt. And I'm having continuing conversations with Painesville Motor and Transfer. I'm going to talk with Michael again tomorrow. The one thing that I can say throughout all of this, I'm really proud of the fact that we have a very good working relationship with our bus company. That is a doubt is the case in school districts, especially school districts that don't own their buses, that contract out. So I'm optimistic. I really do think we can come up with a good, sound transportation plan that can meet students and families' needs. But yeah, I'm hearing the same issues that when you talk about retired people that are primary bus drivers and that's an age that can be of concern. The other thing is, when the state did do a shutdown, there were over 800 CDL tests that were canceled because of that. And so now there's even a backlog. If you do have drivers that want to be hired on, I'm sure some of you saw the school bus when you pulled in this evening for the meeting, that, you know, they're looking for drivers. And thankfully, Department of Public Safety works with schools quickly to get people licensed. But you still have this backlog of people that are trying to be licensed. So there are real concerns. I'm just very optimistic. I think we will come up with a plan that can work.
And then we, moving on to meals. So we were working on what the cafeteria would look like and how many students we can get in there safely at a time, whether, what the tables would look like, would we have students eating in classrooms? And so that'll be something that will get food service involved in. And a lot of it is really just going to depend on how many students we can have in the building at a time. With our, with the high school level, you know, we have, we encourage students to go other places and eat lunch within the building. And, you know, we may need to rein that in a little bit if we have to be socially distanced because it's hard to supervise many different areas. So that'll be, those are some details that we need to work through and that includes the supervision. And then if we're not able to have all the students in the building at once, then students who are at home on a particular day, we need to be able to provide meals for those students and what that satellite meal pickup would look like. And so we're kind of working through where those would be. And then-
I have a good question on that too.
Yep.
Would there be opportunity for, if we're doing the bus routes, the days that the students won't be coming to school, that they could drop it off at somebody's house versus having a family portal location? Or is that just way too complicated to add that in? But potentially if there are families, if they live in the country, their parents are already gone, they can't make it to drop if a bus already was in route? Would there be options that they could put it? I'm just trying to think through like the challenges of those students not being able to get meals. I don't know if it's possible.
I think the bus company already works with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that certainly is something that is, you know, worth the conversation. What I'm really interested in, so when March rolled around and then when the decision was made to not bring students back at all, originally, the state patrol's interpretation of the traffic laws was that it was not legal for a school bus to stop without children on it and use their eight ways. Well, immediately, they got feedback to say, whoa, this is how we're planning on getting meals out to some of our families.
There's flies.
So they backtracked and they relaxed on that. So the question's going to be is, how are some other agencies going to like having buses use their eight ways and stop sometimes to pick kids up and sometimes just randomly to stop? And so there's other, there are other factors that are, or other decision makers that are going to be, they're going to have to weigh in on something like that. But certainly, I think that's a very viable thing that we need to investigate and see. Is that a way to potentially deliver meals? It certainly has some promise, I think.
I was thinking of just another issue too, food. We did start kind of moving towards an open campus in some respects and how that might affect rest of the restaurant if you can't eat in McDonald's. I don't know if they would go up there, but. And then the other one is, this is more of a high school problem, but you've got kids coming in and out and going all day. It's not like at the elementary school, they all come in mostly in the morning, you have to check in, they're there. But high school, you've got them coming in and going all the time. So it's hard to keep track of who was tested and who was-
Yeah, that definitely is going to be something that will, I think it's going to come down, through all of this, we're going to need staff to be able to do multiple things. So we may be using some of our non-certified staff at entrances. We may have some of our certified staff at entrances. You know, we're working on what our office would look like. So when visitors come in to see Amy, where they're going to stand and how students are going to sign in. And so we'll just have to make adjustments on that based on what we're going to be required to do. Mary, do you want to talk about the number two where the masks and things?
You have to. So, I think that your number two is a little bit different than our number two, but I'll go back, I'll go back to the summary document. So with masks and things like that, we've got a couple of different plans in place that will be, because we don't follow the protocols that were given by the governor on that. You know, we're, everyone's been following the news and, you know, what we're predicting will happen. However, we're also understanding that our younger population, that the instructors might not have to have their masks on during that direct instruction time with their kiddos. And if we're going to keep our kids in those same small groups throughout the day, that that will alleviate some of that need to have masks on during that learning time. Any questions on that, Pete?
There was a question I did have because it gets all tangled up everywhere. First, it's asking if they're close to people, then it's social distancing, now it's kind of convoluted together in a lot of the stuff out there. I listened to the U.S. Surgeon General talking about two arm lengths. Two arm lengths for a child is a whole lot different than two arm lengths for an adult. And so it's kind of tangled up. If it was like, it looked like it was going to be, they shouldn't have to have masks on because social distance was supposed to take care of that. But I think, I think the masks from people I talked to probably are the most serious part. Parents want to know when and how and if they're supposed to have them on and when they're not supposed to have them on. And then if you look at all the information we have on it, you're not supposed to touch your face. I'm not sure we're going to take kids and they're not going to be having their fingers all over that face mask they're just going to get all day long, which is supposed to be really bad. You see what I'm saying? So I don't know what the actual, I'm concerned about what the governor does there and I hope he really thinks about how we're going to handle that, that it's reasonable. Because right now, it is all tangled up everywhere.
Well, I talked to one of our kindergarten teachers and it's like, how are we going to keep kids at that age with masks on all the time? Social distancing is going to be very difficult because are we going to provide the masks? Do we have to have them at every door when the kids come in or do we expect them to bring them?
Those are great questions and they're all things that we're pondering right now, making plans for. But of course, you know, it's mostly to keep our kids safe and to protect those vulnerable populations with our staff and our kiddos and our families. So that's kind of, those are some of the things that we're looking at. You guys are very spot on with those comments. And again, we'll look for that guidance and we'll follow through with what we can, but we also need to realize that kids are kids. You know, we can talk and we can teach and we can promote and we can make that good hygiene, keep part of our, you know, 10 minutes when we walk in the door every morning. Just keep reinforcing and reinforcing and reinforcing good hygiene. Wash your hands, keep your hands away from your face, wear a mask when you're in social areas. But we also realize that our kids are still kids.
So, let's see where we're at here. Okay, so we've also started to look at some of the other thing, like if a student has symptoms and how we would handle that. And so we're looking at what the guidelines would be for that and where would we have an area where if a student was having those symptoms that somebody was coming to pick them up, that we could isolate that student? And so we're working on where that would be in each building. And then also what it looks like for, you know, those non-academic times, like when students are putting their, you know, winter clothes away or, you know, at the elementary with the cubbies and only a couple of grade levels have lockers. And at the high school, you know, if the lockers are right next to each other and what that would look like. And so what we're going to, what we're looking at is encouraging students to have backpacks and carry their things all day and not have to go to their locker. Here with FIED, we're looking at whether students would change for FIED class or not or if there's a way that we could, we could assign lockers that are six feet apart and what that would look like. And so that all kind of ties into the hygiene part of it and hopefully that students are, and at the high school, a lot of students don't use their lockers anyway, which helps. And, but at the elementary, they're going to have winter clothes and things like that. So just kind of working on the logistics of those. And again, looking at the procedures for monitoring and handling students who are ill or test positive and what that would look like. And then the other thing that we need to take into consideration is staff and how that's going to look, how we're going to deliver instruction, whether, if it's a hybrid model, is it that some of our teachers are doing some distance learning at the secondary level? Is it that we have grade levels that are distance learning so that we, and the lower the grade level, the more that we have them in the building and not having to do that? We've looked at a couple of different ways to adjust our A/B schedule and what that would look like and leaving room for students to be able to do in school and also the distance learning part. So we're just kind of formulating ideas and once we get some more guidance in that, then we'll be able to really focus in on some of those, some of those areas.
Right, and then I'll move on to the social emotional learning piece. Part of what will be required to do with the plan is provide our family, staff and students with access to those resources for mental health and wellness. And our mental health team did an amazing job this past spring of creating our one-stop mental health shop on our website. So that will be part of what we share off as well as our department of health, tips and resources, our department of education, social emotional competencies, and then whatever work we do that follows with bringing seven mindset. I think the timing will be perfect to roll those all together for our students and families and let them know all the wonderful things that our staff can do to support everyone during this time. David, do you want to talk about the distancing?
Well, and we just, we're not quite sure on, you know, whether, I think the focus that we want to have is that our elementary students are in school as much as possible. And then as we get older, we stagger that. And then how are we going to utilize alternative settings, whether it's the auditorium or courtyards or, you know, just different areas even at the elementary with some of their smaller rooms and then the availability of the media center? Otherwise, you know, I think we're just, we're going to get to that point where we have a little clearer understanding of what the recommendations are and what the requirements are, because those are two separate things. And then we have to come up with a plan that we feel fits Painesville students the best. And really, in the end, the transportation, the programming, everything that we do is, needs to be for the students. And so it'll be up to us and the staff to come up with the best plan for that.
So one thing, like, is there a way that we could partner with local businesses, companies in that a lot of this is falling on the school district? And when a lot of things fall in the school district, it does fall probably unproportionally on women as, you know, if we think about, if it does go to where students are at school every other day, things like that, how can we put kind of some ownership on the places where our parents are working? That they're taking some responsibility or communication and how do we help with that part of it? A lot of this is falling on the district and it's like, how could our community, and I don't know how we have those conversations, but start thinking through, because I'm talking to some, you know, friends and it's the women thinking, do I need to quit my job? Do I need to, like, how do I make it through this if we go through this again? And not saying this doesn't impact men, that's not at all what I'm saying. But I think there is a lot that falls on those shoulders. And so it's like, how do we start thinking through, how can our community be partners in this instead of all coming down on the school trying to find daycare to figure this out? Whereas could they also say, yes, your kid can come to work or we're going to provide spaces or here's what we're going to do? I'm not hearing a lot of that just anywhere, but I think our community has said they're committed, they've shown they're committed. Could we do something differently? And again, I'm not saying this only falls on women, that's not, please don't take it that way. I'm just saying, I think those are the conversations I'm having and how can our community be part of some of these solutions so it's not just coming down onto administration right now trying to figure it all out and come up all those plans? I mean, that's a far off, like, dream world, but.
Yeah, and no, I hear exactly what the concern is. I think, you know, the next step really in this is we are patiently waiting for clear guidance. And that is something that I can't stress enough is what is truly needed. I do not think it is far-fetched to think that we can have a hybrid model that could potentially have students in the building five days a week. I really, I really personally believe we can do that. I can't get a plan in front of you today that demonstrates that until I see some guidance.
And by guidance, you mean like rules, not, I mean, we've got plenty of guidance and ideas we need to know-
No, I don't want rules.
But that's what you're waiting for.
I just want guidance that isn't going to change.
Can do or not do.
I just want guidance that isn't going to change. I would be perfectly happy right now if the governor tomorrow just said, you know what, Matt? Just take the fall guidance document that MDE has put out and use that. I'm fine with that. I'm just so tired of moving targets.
I think that's everybody. But this document here, I mean, I, as a business owner, I have to have a plan, my COVID-19 plan in place, right? This is just like that, that we have to have something in place. But like you say, right now, we're aiming at a moving target, it's hard to give answers about anything.
Correct.
And it's hard to plan for anything. It's almost-
I can tell the board right now that if, on the 27th of July or the 15th of July, whenever this announcement is coming, if what we hear is that you take the current MDE fall guidance and say that that is what the rules are for the fall, I believe we can come up with a system that I think people will be pleasantly surprised as to how close to five days a week we can get. I firmly believe that we can do that. We just need the rules to be set. We can't continue to have moving target after moving target after new initiative, different goal and different expectation and new outcome. We just want to know. And so to answer your question about those things, I also do believe our community will be a player in this. They will be more than happy to step forward and to assist. But it's difficult. You know, I've probably received a half a dozen phone calls from people asking, hey, you know, it's got to be stressful right now in schools, what could we do to help? What do I tell them? Do I tell them, well, do you know how many kids I can put on a bus? Well, sorry, Matt, I can't help you with that.
Right.
Well, how many can I have in school? Sorry, Matt, I can't help you with that. But just know, if you need some help, Matt, we're here. So I do believe there are people out there that are going to be willing to step up and I'm fully anticipate that those people will be there. Right now, let's just get the clarity that we need and then let's put that very best plan together for Painesville and let's go with it.
I hope that's true. I hope we get clarity that trend has not shown that that is the way it's going. So that's where part of my concern comes up is if there is continued moving targets, it does put a lot of stress on a structure of the family, whether it's a guardian or parent. And so if they can proactively, how do we engage, like, what are those-
And that's what I'm hearing here is from the people who don't know and are not able to hear from the schools of what it's going to look like and aren't able to tell their kids. And at that point- And at that point, I, and this district and other districts, I have so many parents that are like, I'm, I'm just going to pull kids, I'm just going to do it at home because I don't know what to tell the kids about what fall is going to look like if they have to wear masks. If they have to wear masks all day, every day, they're not going. If it's every other day, then I might as well just keep them home anyway and do it at home. You know, stuff like this and I'm, I can't tell you any different because the state can't tell us any different and I'm just, I'm tired of it too. I mean, I think we're all just kind of down on this.
And I think part of the starting...
Sorry, Mary, I forgot you were here.
Go ahead.
I think that we must trust with our community and, and like you said earlier, Maggie, we know that we've got good relationships with our community, with our businesses, with all that's gone on in the past while. So that is, that leads us to believe that no matter the plan, when, when the governor comes out and tells us what, what we need to do and provides us those very clear directives, we're going to have a plan in place that meets the needs of our kids with the best interest of those families at heart. We know that our youngest learners need to be in school every day. So in the back of our minds as an administrative team is what can we do to get those kids to school every day, to get them that five days a week experience? How does it look? Yes, it will take a lot of planning, but we'll get there. We will find a way. We just need to be so very patient and very understanding with the process and, and not jump to any conclusions of homeschool or enroll online school, but, but then know that we're going to offer a really good program here that's going to be exceptional and it's going to meet the needs of our learners. And I know that that's a reach and, and as a parent, I get that, that uncertainty is frightening. But at the same time, let's trust ourselves and each other to put a plan together that meets both needs.
My question is what, how do the teachers feel about this? I was, I see education Minnesota's been running commercials and things like this about that, that the teachers are pretty concerned. What's the general consensus here, if there is any at all? I mean, just kind of curious about from the teacher's perspective. We hear administrative perspective, but it's nice to hear the teachers think.
Interesting that you, that you say that because we just, we met with the teacher union reps earlier this week. And I would say, and you know, David, you can speak for yourself on that meeting, but I thought that meeting was extremely productive.
Awesome.
What I'm hearing, and again, I'm hearing it from them, I'm not, you know, sitting down with every teacher and getting it straight from each teacher, but what I'm hearing is that, that yes, our teachers understand the value that we can provide with students in the classroom and they want to, to continue to be able to provide that. Is everybody worried and, or not worried is the wrong word, but does everybody want to have a system that gives them and everybody the best chance at safety and wellness? Of course. And that's the same thing the district wants. So I personally, I mean, the, the hour and 15-minute meeting we had earlier this week, I really think that the teachers are, are in the same camp. I, I, I see it as, as, as hearing the same message. And I mean, David, maybe you had a different take, but...
No, I, I feel like our, our school community is really strong right now and, and as hard as they worked preparing for the distance learning and implementing the best that we could on the fly, I really think they want to work just as hard to get students back in the building. And what that, what those, the safety measures look like, we're not 100% sure yet. My hope is that we are not, that, that they take a look at what rural Minnesota looks like in this whole pandemic and then they look, they give us an opportunity to not be lumped into the suburban schools or maybe, you know, we're all, we're, we're, it's looked at a little bit differently. And so that's my hope and that, that hope is that they, they put this on the local level a little bit and give us some leeway to fit the, the norms of our community, not the norms of, you know, a school in the cities with 3,000 students in a high school, a little different than what we look like here. And so that's, that's the hope.
I think too, the thing I would say is that, you know, we're the leaders of school district, school board, whatever comes down, we're going to have to get behind it and just go with it. I know there's going to be people who will be unhappy. It's going to be, you know, it's been so politicized. Regardless of whether we're happy or not, we're going to have to get behind it and go for it. We're going to have to be the ones that sell it to the community and just, you know, we can't sit here and complain about it. We got to go forward.
There's no politics when it comes to serving our students.
Shouldn't be, right. That's what we have to get out.
I don't feel like there is in this school district with parents or students or, or staff. And, and I think in the end, we'll, we'll do what's best and we'll do what's best for our community, not what's best for our community 80 miles down the road.
And Rick, I, I think the other piece, when you talk about, you know, getting behind this, I really, I firmly believe what is going to be a final outcome in Painesville is going to be one that is student-centered, that's going to meet student needs. If that means for you as a student, you need to access more distance learning than me as a student, I believe we're going to have a system in place that's going to allow that. And it doesn't mean that everybody that goes to school in Painesville needs to have the exact same educational experience. That's what the system needs to be. And it's going to take some, some trials, it's going to take some, we'll hit some speed bumps, we're going to do some things wrong, but what we're going to do wrong, it's going to be in the attempt of doing things in the best interest of kids. But I really think we can have a spectrum of services that we can develop, that we should be able to meet whatever that kid or family special circumstance is, we should be able to find that place on that spectrum and say, this is what works for, for me. And that to me is what I would say is most exciting about this.
And we need to be positive about that.
And I think, Matt, too, that this, like you kind of said, that this is a good catalyst for that. And like finding the positive, I don't want to speak for teachers, but I talked to a lot of, in the elementary school especially, teachers on that day, we picked up equipment for who knew how long it was going to be and they were all just practically in tears. They didn't want to do it, they hated the whole idea. And when I talked to them afterwards, I don't think any of them really enjoyed it, but almost every one of them said to me, I was forced to learn technology that I had been putting off or that I didn't want to learn or whatever, and now I have these new skills and it went better than I thought, you know? So maybe it's just looking at it as a catalyst to being forced to open it up to more tailored learning.
I think when, I think a hybrid model of school should be a norm, not scenario number two. And so there is so much opportunity in this, so much opportunity at preschool all the way through 12th grade to create a hybrid model of school that fits the needs of, of different students and not, because I don't want, the last thing I want is for people to say, we just want to go back to the way we were. That's just not an option.
I think a lot of people want that.
When people say, when people say we want all our kids in school, that's different. And that, through that, we can create a hybrid model of education that is going to meet more students. Because what we've learned with the distance learning is that there are students, it made it a little easier to determine students who disengaged when we did the distance learning. And so it gives you an idea on the number of students that, that were in that boat. And I think that it's our job to provide something that's different that is going to keep that student here and keep that student engaged. So that means that we need to look at a lot of different ways of doing things.
Yeah, and I feel confident, the plan that we're going to place is based off of what I hear, we're going to be fine and I know that. I think it's more of, not that it's a negative, but the frustration of how do we help our families prepare and how do we extend some of the responsibility and accountability outside these walls so it doesn't just live on the backs of the administrative, administration team or back to the staff? Like this is a community issue and I know people are really, you know, they're asking you, so it's like, how do we say it creatively, but what could they do? What could it look like if they're true partners in some of this, like whether it's space or whatever it may be? Because we might need their help.
Yep. So certainly if there's more questions, we can, we can talk more about this, but work session in August, I am pretty much assuming the only thing that's going to be on that work session is going to be this plan.
But we don't, we don't have another meeting?
Yeah, only one meeting in July.
And this will be the only one? I am 100% on base with that.
The other questions I had were like in the recommend, the MDE like kind of work plan, when it talked about some of the contractual things, I'm sure you have, are figuring that out of if there has to be any sort of amendments to those contracts, does that, do you all just wait and see? I'm just curious about that process, I guess, what...
Yes, so you know, I have, I have been looking at contractual issues and, and I think we actually are sitting in a pretty good place. I, I do, I do know that all of our groups are going to need to have some conversation and some discussion about how the district is interpreting language and what the intent was at the time that that language was written. I don't see any of those conversations or discussions as things that are mountains by any means. I, I think they're very much things that we can tackle and, and as long as we keep in the perspective of we're here for kids and what's in the best interest of kids, I really do believe we can come up with some quality solutions to those. But I don't anticipate any large-scale issues with that. The, the other one that obviously is, is out there too is what's going to happen with activity contracts and things like that. And, and that's something that I will be gathering more information as the, as we learn more and stuff. And obviously we'll be getting that back to the board as far as what I think is appropriate.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, it comes up, it'll be our only topic, most likely, on the first meeting in August, which is down below here, August 11th.
Mary, did you have something?
No, no, I'm just enjoying the conversation.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, then let's move on. Facility project, you kind of went over a lot of that.
Yeah, so obviously everybody had, got to be able to see some stuff and maybe put a little visual spatial recognition with how things are looking. I don't know if there are more questions that people have. You know, I don't necessarily know that we'll do this every month, but I do think kind of as I was talking, I've had been talking to SiteLogic and BCI, I'm probably thinking that a September board meeting, we'll probably do something similar and, and the board will go and, and kind of take another tour and stuff. If as a board you would prefer to do something like that each month, then I just need to hear that. But otherwise, we're going to kind of play it a little bit by ear and when they start hitting some more milestones, then we'll, we'll get you guys engaged at those, those milestones more so than, than maybe just planning on doing that every month.
Preferably for, my thought would be, is if all works, the kids are coming back in whatever hybrid form you have, I'd be like interested in doing something on the 25th of August before they all come back.
Okay.
Beyond that, once they're in school, I think we just let them go for it and we'll be able to watch most of from outside and take tours as we desire, but I would prefer personally to see it before...
Actually, you know what? Yeah, the 25th of August would be good because then that, I believe it's August 31st is when BCI is, is planning on turning that, that CTE space over and stuff. So let's, let's do that. I'll make note of that, August 25th, we'll have the gentleman back and go take a peek again and touch base again.
Might be cool to do some virtual tours as well since the community won't be able to come to the space.
Sure.
It'd be nice for people to see it.
I like that idea. I was just thinking about it, how do we get people to...
Well, the other thing that, that is, and we don't obviously know what open house is going to look like, but we, we are going to have some form of a back to school something and what that is going to look like will be determined. But when we do that, we already, I already have conversations with them about we need this space all polished up, ready to go. Because I would, we would do a community event on those same, those same evenings and stuff. So it's probably that September 2, I think, is what would traditionally be an open house date, but that we are targeting for some form of an open house for the CTE remodel piece.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Matt, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Jake, you usually...
Can we just, before you do that, can we just talk about the August schedule? So August 11 must be some sort of a primary date or something. 5:00 PM, I believe we have to be adjourned by 6:00. So I anticipate the only thing that we will tackle will be our, our back to school return to learn plan on August 11th. And then August 25th will be our second meeting, 6:00 PM. I would assume it would be very similar to this configuration that we have right here, if everybody is okay with that.
Are we okay with this?
Yep.
I'd say that we can stay here for now.
Okay. Now Jake?
My time to shine. I move the board, you now adjourn.
Okay, I'll sign.
And we're motion to adjourn. We have a second from Thomas. Any further discussion, home favors say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no.